For April 16th at 7:00 PM. To order. We have enough regular members all here, so we've got no alternates. We appointed. The first order of business is the minutes of April 2nd, regular meeting. Any changes or corrections?
Dave, I read the minutes and I don't have any additions or corrections to offer. I suggest that we approve the minutes as they were submitted.
You make a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. By Donna, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. Okay, we have a public hearing. Mr. Secretary. So this is a continuation?
No.
No, okay. Can you read the call for this?
No. Application 1815 of Michael Glidden, CFM Assistant Town Planner for text amendments to the town of Simsbury zoning regulations to sections of the regulations pertaining to flood management, Article 4, Section B, definitions, Article 7, Section M dot 2 through 7, and Article 12.
Thank you. Mr. Glidden.
Thank you. For the record, Mike Glidden, Assistant Town Planner. So just briefly, as the zoning commission was, we were planning on updating the zoning regulations as a comprehensive review, I forwarded your flood regulations to Diana Nikovitch, who is the National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator for the state of Connecticut. Your current regs were last adopted in 2008. So there's a few housekeeping items that need to take place that are, which are directly related to participation requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. So I'm just going to go really briefly through each of the sections. The main highlights, the changes are in Article 4B and definitions. There are some new definitions along with modifications of existing definitions. Article 7, Section M, subsection 2 through 7 has been changed. These subsections have been changed based on the requirements of FEMA. And we'll go through each one and just really briefly. And along with an Article 12, which has to do with the Zoning Board of Appeals, a new section has been added dealing with variances to the flood within an area of special flood hazard. So just briefly, first in Article 4, Section B, the new definitions. Up above on the screen on the PowerPoint, you have a list of all the new terms which are not included in your current regs. These are terms that FEMA requires for participation. Some of these terms include base flood elevation. That's the actual elevation that's determined based on the maps on how high the water is anticipated. Cost, that has, having to deal with improvements, and you can see a few other ones. There's one I just want to bring to your attention is substantial damage. That's a new definition, and with adding this definition to your regs, it allows homeowners, should we have a flood event, they have a policy of the National Flood Insurance, and they are substantially damaged as defined by the new term in your regs, they can apply for what's known as increased cost to compliance or ICC. It's a loan of $30,000 which could be used to renovate, meaning elevate, relocate, or remove their house from the area of special flood hazard. So it's a benefit to certain policyholders. Now, the next two slides are just really quick are some existing definitions. The new text is in bold text for you. Changes, that is included to the definition of basement, a direct connection to, for floodplain management purposes is outlined now, along with the definition of development. Definition of development has been changed several times by FEMA. So this now covers all of the activities across the board, which is not just your typical, I'm building a house, I'm putting a retaining order. This is, also includes activities such as filling and grading, excavation, drilling operations, et cetera, because all of these have potential impact to properties within an area of special flood hazard. The next is substantial improvements, and these, this has to do with a structure, existing structure in a flood hazard. You want to do more than 50% of the market value of improvements to a house. That house needs to be brought into compliance, but there's two exceptions to the rule. One is for someone who's correcting a documented code violation. The second is historical preservation, if it is a structure that is listed in Department of Interior as a historically significant structure. But with these two additions to that definition, it's now a clear picture what is considered a substantial improvement and what is not. The last is clarifying the definition of structure. The National Flood Insurance Program is very specific when it deals with what is considered a structure in an area of special flood hazard. Now we'll get into Article 7, Section M. Subsection 2 has to deal with identifying the current flood insurance study, or FIS, and the flood insurance rate map. Neither one of these documents has been changed at this point. We're already using these as the guidelines for determination of development within a floodplain. It's that your regs have to reflect the current documents. After that is, has to deal with administration. Really what this is, it's one, giving a call out to people. If you have structures that were built prior to the passage of this new text, you're considered grandfathered, you're not automatically considered in violation, subject to enforcement action provided it was built in compliance with whatever standards were there at the time. The other is interpretation of the regs. There are three components to that. They are considered minimal requirements. They are liberally construed to be in favor of the governing body, because once again, this National Flood Insurance Program, it's to protect people from the loss of property and life. And lastly, they're deemed neither to repeal or negate any powers that are granted on other state statutes. The last thing is, a disclaimer is now included in the regs. Basically, it's saying that, yeah, the maps show the worst-case scenario, but your worst-case scenario may not be able to be predicted on the maps. It could exceed what's shown on these maps. If anyone has any questions at any point, please, I'll be happy to stop. Next is the outlines, the duties and responsibilities of the floodplain administrator. I serve as the floodplain administrator for the town of Simsbury. So this, what this section has to deal with these changes is directly, what are we looking for and why are we looking for it? It gives almost as a responsibility to the floodplain administrator, but also gives a perspective to the applicants. This is what we're looking for, the types of information, and et cetera. Next is Section, subsection 5, which has to deal with, it gives like a guide of activities which are intended, as I said earlier, to prevent the loss of life and property. Some of these structure-specific activities could be protecting utility connections, the infiltration of floodwaters, the proper sighting of onsite sewage disposal systems or septic systems to minimize either erosion or infiltration of floodwaters into these systems. And the other is above-ground tanks, oil tanks, propane tanks, or other components that they're properly elevated and anchored so that in a flood event, they don't come off from their location and are dislodged and cause damage to a budding neighbor's property. Two terms, compensatory storage and equal conveyance, are in your regs currently. They now will be housed in this section, so it provides really an applicant, not only in Section 4, you said what we're looking for, but some of the activities which will achieve the goals that are outlined in Section 4. Section 6 has to deal with areas in town of which a base flood elevation is not determined or floodway is not, it is not mapped. So in the picture, it's really grainy and I apologize. That is near Latimer School. That's, that water course there is a great example of, it's an unnumbered A-zone, meaning there's not a detailed study. The area of special flood hazard is kind of graphically shown on the map. So in these cases, there are certain activities that homeowners can do to be considered in compliant without re-studying the entire water course. So right now, your regs are silent to this, these activities. This really, and we've been kind of practicing this, and just as an aside, you'll see it in a few other slides, there's some numbers, these are from FEMA, having to deal with properties that are not built to the proper elevation standards. Example being if someone is, builds to a house and they're four feet below the base flood elevation, they're paying $9,500 a year in insurance. If you're, if you're building at the base flood elevation, it's $1,410 a year for flood insurance. In your case, we are two feet above. This $427 figure is probably close. That's showing actually, it's three feet above the base flood elevation, which exceeds your regs. Next section has to deal with the specific standards dealing with residential and non-residential structures. Residential structures must meet your freeboard requirement. That means they are, the living space is elevated two feet above the base flood elevation as defined on the flood insurance rate map. Non-residential structures or commercial structures have a few options. They could meet the freeboard requirement or pursuant to FEMA, submit a floodproofing certificate where a professional goes through and says the appropriate mitigation efforts are made so that you don't have damage to the structure or its contents in a flood The last section has to deal with Article 12 to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This gives guidance about the ZBA and applicants and the process and the standards, the strict standards that are held to a variance procedure, should someone want to apply for a variance to the floodplain regulations. There's a few things, activities that the ZBA can grant variances, such as historic preservation, as I said earlier. That's kind of exempt from a substantial improvement, but individuals who don't, let's say it's a residential home, it's registered to Department of Interior as a historic place, and they, they don't want to elevate the structure to the two-foot freeboard requirement. They want to build either below the base flood elevation or at the base flood elevation. They can with a variance, and that is a very strict variance that FEMA says, yeah, you can get that relief. The other is a functionally dependent use of facility. If you had something, you'd see it more in a coastal setting, there was a marina, for example, where you may have a, a structure of which it's in a flood hazard and you choose not to elevate it just because the elevation requirements may mean that the first, the first floor elevation is five, six, seven feet above the existing grade, and because it is strictly dependent to the location, that variance could be granted. It's very rare in that sense in a riverine situation such as Simsbury. The big key to this is a prohibition on granting variances within a designated floodway, especially if it results in an increase of the floodplain. That's going to be the, the big determining factor for the ZBA, should someone apply for a variance. In granting a variance, there's 11, 11 steps that the ZBA will look at for the possibility of approving an application. They range anything from the danger of materials leaving the site affecting others to the ability, the potential for erosion, et cetera. The procedure outline is another dealing with conditions and the applicant demonstrating once, similar to what that 11 items that are on the previous slide, they will have to demonstrate some other pretty measurable terms, should variance be granted. And it really, it paints the pictures that if ZBA wants to grant a variance to an individual in the floodplain, then they really have to click off every single item on the list. And that really protects you as a community that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, really, you want people meeting the regulations 99% of the time. Because in the end, it's protecting life and it's protecting structures. The other thing, one little caveat in there is should someone get a variance from the ZBA, there is a comment that, you know, you may get a variance, however, it will not mean that your insurance will go down. Your insurance is not affected by this. You still will face the insurance based on the extent of hazard that the structure is exposed to. And that's it, just really brief for you.
Mike, you mentioned Latimer, and my recollection is the floodplain, or the floodplain is delineated by a height along the Farmington, really. It's 150 or 160 feet level. It looked to me like you were going up the hill in Latimer. Is there a, an adjacency to a stream that becomes a part of the floodplain?
So when there's a detailed study, there's a lot of factors that are brought in, and this, the Latimer Lane area is a great example where that, that water course was not studied, like the Farmington, for example. There's a cross-sections that show what's the height of the floodway, what's the flight, the height of the area of special flood hazard 100-year. And it actually varies. Example being the center of town, if you were to go to like, to the Gerard Brothers Construction Yard, the floodplain elevation there is 157.7. I only know that we just recently did a Loma, a letter map amendment approval for that site. In years past, Simsbury had what's known as a design flood elevation, so that 160 was the magic number, that if you stayed out of it, you're out of the floodplain. But now, since there's more detailed studies, we go by the studies. So there are areas in town similar to, I think, in the north end of town, Tollgate, the area behind that neighborhood. That's an unnumbered A-zone where there wasn't a detailed study. So you have a graphical representation of the worst-case scenario, but you don't have a, a raw number associated with it. So people at that are advised, you know, you, one, they have the ability to study the water course and determine a base flood elevation, or meeting a two-foot freeboard requirement to building two feet above the existing grade. That keeps them out of any issues related to elevation with the floodplain.
But for example, over by Great Pond, there's a big pond, and people who have houses in that area, they really get concerned about flood insurance when their mortgage requires them to get flood insurance. And it would be pretty clear at, the bank could look at 160 feet and say, you're below 160 feet, we won't grant you a mortgage unless you get flood insurance. But I don't understand how unmapped areas can be, can be dealt with in that way.
What happens sometimes is the mortgage lenders, since the Affordability Act was, was revised in 2014, this was after the Bigget Waters Act, they had, or sorry, that's Bigget Waters, the revision, Grim Waters was the first one. If a mortgage is federally backed, they have to check whether the property is located within an area of special flood hazard as defined by the National Flood Insurance Program mapping. So they'll look at it. Sometimes what happens with people is that, say you have your house here, and the water course is down here with the floodplain. The lending institution may say, whoa, wait a minute, your house is in a floodplain, we're, we require flood insurance. Versus, well, the house is, in reality, the house is like 10 feet above where the grade kind of slopes down to the water course. In those cases, homeowners can, what's, what they could do is one of three options. One is they, they have 90 days when their mortgage lender tells them they need to carry flood insurance to appeal it. And as the appeal process, they can provide documents to them. They can do an elevation certificate, or they can provide topography maps, either from second sources like the town, from the state, et cetera. And I have seen people without spending money, get out of the requirement for flood insurance in those cases. Some lending institutions have been very, they're willing to work with people, knowing that the maps, I mean, also, these maps were done at a county level, at a scale of one, one inch equals 200 feet. So it's, the level of accuracy sometimes is, the width of your eyelash could be a matter of, I'm in a floodplain and I'm out.
Right, okay. Anybody else have any questions? I'm monopolizing it here.
I think you're worried on top of the mountain.
I guess. Okay. Does anyone in the public care to speak to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on application 1815.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, thank you. Okay, now the next item of business is that we can, we may consider this application.
1816.
1815, Mike Glidden. And we have here a report. Do we have a dyslexic number?
Mr. Chairman, for clarity, you have a letter dated April 16th, addressed to Dave Ryan, Chairman of the Simsbury Zoning Commission regarding application 15-18. Michael Glidden, Assistant Town Planner for text amendments to the Simsbury zoning regulations to sections pertaining to flood management, Article 4, Section B, Article 7, and Sections M 2-7 through 7, and Article 12. With regards to this application, it was received on March 19th. We scheduled the hearing for the 16th. You've closed the hearing, since the hearing was closed this evening, you have 65 days to make the decision. With respect to the application, you're acting in a legislative nature. In order to pass the approved text amendment, the commission needs a majority of the total membership of its mission, minimum four favorable votes to pass regardless of forum. We have a forum of six this evening, so you need four favorable votes. Also, you need to set an effective date. And as your Director of Planning and Development, I have attached a draft motion. That motion is formulated in a favorable manner detailing the application with an effective date amended of April 30th, 2018.
Thank you, sir.
And that is a summary of the letter.
Yes. Anybody have any comments or questions or concerns with this? We have to do it anyway.
Just a comment.
Yes.
I'm very impressed with Michael's work here. I think we're very fortunate to have a guy on the staff who can do this for us. I'm impressed. Thank you.
You recommend him for a raise?
[laughing].
Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 1815 for a text amendment to the town of Simsbury zoning regulations to the sections of the regulations pertaining to the flood management, Article 4, Section B, definitions, Article 7, Sections M dot 2-7, and Article 12 as detailed in Exhibit 2 of the application, with an effective date of April 30th, 2018.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? None? Karen, six, nothing?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we have St. Mary's.
St. Mary's Church.
Application 18-16.
My name is Henry Thomas, I'm an architect and builder for the LRC Group from Quamah, Connecticut. I will defer to you to the extent of presentation given me or may not choose to hear tonight. Just a short refresher is that we're back for an amended site plan, in which the footprint of the proposed construction remains constant, however, it was reduced from a two-story building to a one-story building. Incorporated in that plan, we took, addressed a number of the plan-related conditions of the previous approval, so they are built into the drawing, or drawings. And unless you need a refresher bigger than that, I will go silent.
Okay.
Happy to address any questions you may have.
Questions? Jackie, I think we've gone through this a bit.
For a couple months.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Donna?
You're good.
Bruce?
Could you just remind me where the pavers are that are referred to in these notes as being changed?
Bruce? Oops. There was a, we had previously called out as this area being pavers in this little courtyard. It may still get done that way, but we didn't, weren't confident enough to put that on the record, so.
So the drawings we have now have concrete?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And where did you end up on the signage?
Signage has been removed from this application. The building mounted signage. And the building elevations were removed. My apologies. Thank you for mentioning that.
So are we prepared to ash on this?
Hopefully you don't expect us to read all of it.
It's a beautiful motion.
Yeah, for the chairman, if I may. You do have a letter dated April 16th, 2018, addressed to Dave Ryan, Chairman of the Simsbury Zoning Commission regarding application 18-16 of Henry Thomas, RGA and LRC Group, Agent for St. Mary's Church. The basis of the letter summarizes the application process. With it, there is Attachment A, which recommends a draft motion. The motion also references, I believe it's 22 sheets. 20, I believe 23 sheets would be appropriate revision dates. There are also 16 recommended modifications slash conditions associated with those, and if, one, I can just briefly go through those in a summary format, and you could reference the letter in any motion. Item number one of recommended conditions slash modifications are that any modifications incorporated in the final filing set with the town of Simsbury. Item two, full architectural renderings are done as part of the full set. Item number three is erosion sedimentation control surety is posted with the town prior to construction. Four is that a pre-construction meeting is held. Five is that the applicant submit final plans prior to any grading, three sets, signed and sealed. Six, that the applicant produce a permit from the Department of Transportation associated with this application prior to any work on the site. Seven, prior to the issuance of a building permit, they provide documentation from their Water Pollution Control Authority for their connection. Eight, prior to the issuing of a building permit, they solidify their water supply. Nine, that shop drawings associated with building materials are submitted to the town for review prior to their installation to determine compliance with the approved plans. Ten, prior to the issuance of a CO, the applicant provides evidence that they have permits to discharge. Similarly, 11, that the applicant provide evidence of affordable water supply prior to a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. 12, once the plans have been modified and considered final, the applicant shall submit fixed line miler, signed and sealed. Sheets EX1, C 2.2, C 2.3, C 3.2, and C 3.3 to the town engineer. Those are mostly the construction details associated with the site. Item number 13 is minor field adjustments to grading and landscaping may be made based on field conditions upon written approval from the Director of Planning and Community Development in the town of Simsbury per the Center Code. 14, a final as-built be submitted upon completion. Item number 15 is final detailed landscaping. If any modifications can be made, that those be solidified with the Planning Director for the Simsbury Center Code. And item number 16 is slight deviations can be made to approved plans, as long as they're considered compliant and consistent with the approvals, and that is allowed under the Simsbury Center Code.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with certain.
Wait, wait, wait. Question from the force.
The force doesn't have.
Word check. Registered landscape architect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Word check. Registered landscape architect.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with certain modifications and conditions. Application eighteen sixteen submitted by the LRC Group. It's not LRC, what did you just say?
Yeah.
LRC Group, Agent Saint Mary's Church Corporation owner for an addition to the existing church and school on our properties located at nine forty Hot Meadow Street per the Simsbury Center Code. With the following conditions that are noted in Attachment A of Exhibit thirteen. It incorporates the sheets one through twenty-three and general conditions one through sixteen.
I'll second that.
Second by Bruce. More discussion? Applications? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Carrie six, nothing. Thank you. Good work, Kevin. Got a lot of sheets done there.
I wrote a lot.
Okay. We have a new application, eighteen seventeen, Douglas Hope, Dr. Hope. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Amendment?
You have an application before you. This came in late last week. Mr. Hope submitted an application for a site plan amendment to previously approved site. Came before your session only a year ago. For a dentist's office, he is proposing to convert Section four to an apartment with no proposed exterior renovations or site changes. As part of the Simsbury Center Code, this application is being received by you this evening. You have the requirement for posting notice of the application on the site. It's staff's recommendation that you table this this evening to deal with that administrative matter. But based on a review of the information submitted to date, the applicant is compliant with the Simsbury Center Code. That administrative matter to deal with. Mr. Hope was at DRB, and we presented it to DRB for informational purposes. Again, no proposed exterior changes and no proposed changes to the site. DRB was comfortable with that fact that there were no changes, therefore, no action required by the designer board. Again, staff's recommendation is to table this tonight. I am prepared to answer any questions. Mr. Hope was at the DRB meeting, but not in attendance at this, tonight.
And what is the application for, Jamie, and Ms. Dana? Why is it here?
Originally, when proposed, it was a dentist's office with potentially additional office space for the dentist's practice on the second floor. They are now proposing to convert that second floor space to an apartment or residential space. So there will be a dwelling unit on the second floor versus office space on the second floor. That is their proposal.
That is consistent with the center's.
That is consistent with the center. Yes. And again, as a form-based code, no changes to the site. They have parking onsite. They have easement arrangements with the church that have been solidified during the original permitting process a year ago. So again, staff's initial review of this is that they are compliant.
Except that they haven't put the signs out.
They haven't. Similar, Saint Mary's submitted their signed affidavit this evening saying they did that, but it's fifteen days, and Mr. Hope is understanding. He will be back before you on May seventh.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table application eighteen seventeen of Douglas Hope, DMD, for a site plan amendment until our May seventh meeting.
Seconding.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Application eighteen eighteen. Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero, for site plan amendment for Stop and Shop. We. Well, DRB's made a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Glidden is going to hand out a letter. We actually had two letters authored today, depending on how DRB handled this application this evening. Matt Whitmer, from Phase Zero Design, appeared before the design review board this evening to do a presentation. The result of that presentation was potential revisions to the plans, and DRB tabled that application. And Mr. Whitmer is here, so if I misspeak, please correct me that. The applicant's representative was comfortable with the DRB tabling that. You have a letter from James D. Rabidey, I see, Director of Planning and Community Development, dated April sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, addressed to Dave Ryan. With regards to this application, it's coming before you. You have sixty-five days to act, which brings you to six, twenty, twenty eighteen. Based on review of the application and the fact that the design review board is still in the process of reviewing the application, it's staff's recommendation to table this matter until your May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, meeting. Matt Whitmer is here this evening from Phase Zero. He is prepared to do either a brief or full presentation, so you understand what the application is about. Again, a site plan amendment for changes to the facade as well as changes to the interior of the store.
Has the, are the changes that the design review board has suggested, are they substantial? Are they?
I think they may be of the more subtle nature. They could be viewed substantial by the company.
Can I?
Of course.
If I may, I'd rather come back with something that has been.
Closer to what they want.
Worked on and then reviewed and then, you know, can be, can be more, more appropriate for this presentation.
Right. You might confuse us if you give us some.
I do, the commission members do have copies of what was proposed. So again, there was subtle discussions on some changes to the facade.
Okay. Recommend we table.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table application eighteen eighteen of Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero Design, Inc., agent, until our May seventh meeting.
May seventh, right? Second by Dana? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrie six, nothing. Thank you. See you again. Okay, we have application eighteen dash nineteen for a sign permit for revived boutique consignment. Is someone here?
I think Jamie is.
No, Mr. Chairman. With regards to this application, this also went through design review this evening. Design review made a favorable recommendation to the zoning commission. This is a change in sign. It matches the unified sign plan. All of the signs on this property have a light white or cream background that matches the building facade, clapboards, with maroon lettering. And they are proposing to match that color palette. Maybe a little misleading in the packet that you received, it shows more of a yellow background, but we did seek clarity from the sign company. And we do have email confirmation that their intent is to match one for one of the existing signs and the color on the building. They have prepared signs, the same company that has done signs on this building before. Consequently, it's staff's recommendation that this sign be approved.
Are we ready to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we approve application eighteen dash nineteen, as it was submitted.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Six, nothing. It carries. Application eighteen twenty of TJ Donahue for the Simsbury Free Library.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've recently filed an application for a site plan approval for property of the Simsbury Free Library in Simsbury. We have a brief slideshow I'll run through with you. Tonight, we're asking that you set this for a public hearing and try to take it up at your next meeting if you can, but I would like to go through the slides to show you what we're proposing in case you want to give us some consideration and have some.
Doesn't require a public hearing?
Just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, it does not require a public hearing, but similar to Mr. Hope's, there is the fifteen-day notice requirement. So again, staff's recommendation would be to table this to your May seventh meeting, but allow Mr. Donahue to do a presentation.
In two thousand, in two thousand and ten, Rich Curtis and group of kids from Simsbury High School sought sponsorship of the Simsbury Free Library, sponsored them, and subsequently, the Simsbury Historical Society joined in. And they put together at that time a documentary movie on the two summers that Martin Luther King spent in Simsbury. And it was very well-received and very widely recognized. And after that time, the kids.
Yep.
The kids said.
Oops.
So this was the original memorial celebration in two thousand and eleven, and.
This is second time.
He's just messing with you.
Yeah.
Yes, he is. And so they did that. They've continued to participate with the Martin Luther King Group every year since to keep that tradition very much alive. They made a decision, the children themselves, to build a memorial to educate, to celebrate, and to inspire, as they were by Martin Luther King. And this is in the package, but this is a solicitation that they put together. And with the solicitation and a lot of goodwill from a lot of people, a lot of nice contributions, they've raised a hundred thousand dollars to build this memorial, and they're ready to do that. These are for the kids at the recently destroyed Francis Farm Dormitory, were very similar to the one that Martin Luther King lived in. But the kids were out there and just, they went everywhere they could and did everything they could to raise a significant amount of money and to keep this project going, including designing the memorial. So this is the project. And that's the face sheet. The project is going to be at the Simsbury Free Library. We had plans, previously, you took this up and you approved it for the Simsbury Historical Society and a location. But recently, by agreement, the two groups have decided it's still a joint project of the two groups, but the best possible location is this location where it will occupy this front quadrant of the free library space adjacent to the cemetery and in this space. And the project's memorial feature is going to be five glass plaques thirty inches wide, five feet tall, four foot six out of the ground. And they're going to have some graphics on them, and they have five key elements of his experience in Simsbury. Quotes from a letter that he wrote home, and several of his comments, and several factual recitations of how significant it was that he did spend his time in Simsbury. This is another view of what it's going to look like from Hot Meadow Street here. And it's going to, the cemetery's here, and it's going, you're going to enter here. And the next slide will show you the layout. And that's the elevation from the top, which shows where the brick pavers are. Panels will be on the top right quadrant. And we do have on there the representative statements as to what it's going to be on the panels. You can run through those, please. Thank you. And then this is the website, and that's, you can still reach onto the website and get a copy of the fifteen-minute movie and also the news stories that they had.
It's lovely.
Pardon me?
It's lovely.
Thank you. Thank you. We've had over a hundred and fifty kids in the program since, over the, over the eight years that we've been doing it, and they are all inspired. They think that one of the things that's most significant is that when we get a freshman or sophomore in the high school involvement program, that was the age that he was when he came to Simsbury in nineteen forty-four to work in the tobacco fields. So we're looking for you to take this up at the next meeting, and hopefully, if you have any input that you want, we're interested in that.
Comments? Motion to table this?
Well, just one question. I, you didn't mention it till last. The layout of this thing, does it meet all the setback requirements? Are there any concerns from the site? I mean, relative to this layout and the proximity to the cemetery line and that sort of thing?
The only structures are the glass panels, and they're well within all the, all the setback inside my requirements.
Thank you.
You know, the interestingly enough, the street line is right here. So the edge of the street is here.
Thanks. Good idea, huh?
Yeah. You did a great job.
Okay, let's table this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table application eighteen twenty of TJ Donahue, Agent, Simsbury Free Library owner, for a site plan amendment until our May seventh meeting.
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrie six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Application eighteen twenty-one is unnecessary.
Would you like me to just clarify that, Mr. Chairman?
It's approved.
DRB has, DRB has approved it to the center zone. If the DRB approves the site, the sign thing, then the planning director can approve it. So we will skip over that. We have a discussion on, was there any correspondence?
Nothing to add.
Okay. We have a discussion of six ninety, Hot Meadow Street, Ensign Mansion.
My name is Mark Scully, and my wife, Eka, and I purchased the Ensign House about a year ago, last, ended June, closed. And for the past nine months or so, we've been working largely below the radar to try to figure out what to do with this beautiful property. And these are the first, our first foray really out before design review board and now before you. So thank you for giving us the time, really just to share with you our plans. We're not looking for any formal approvals. We didn't bring our architect or our landscape architect, so I'm not a developer, so a lot of this is new to me. So if you have questions, really, the, the point of this is to engage you in a discussion, share with you our, our vision, see if there's issues that we need to consider, or see if there are any significant obstacles. I think many of you know this property, I think everybody knows this property. Many of you were probably involved with the prior team and what they wanted to do. But this is really what, what the property is. This is a, I want to say this is existing, these are actually a little older. A lot of the shrubs here are no longer there, but the, you know, the property comprises the beautiful Ensign House, built, start, the structure on nineteen oh five, nineteen oh six, by Joseph Ensign, president of Ensign Bickford. And then in the, in the fifties, the building was largely given to First Church, First Church Christ across the street, and they built this addition, I refer to as the Annex. This part right here was, was the chapel. There were Sunday school rooms down below, and then a large fellowship hall in the back. This entrance to the Annex is shown, shown here. From the back, the Annex is really a large box. It's a, it's a cinder block construction. And then, as you're looking at, so from the back of the property, looking west, you'll see the mansion and then a courtyard area that was bank-built to be the main, the main, the main. They actually built up that courtyard, they raised up that courtyard quite a bit. So our goals when we really bought this property were largely to do what, I think we went into this thinking we would do what the prior team was going to do, which was to renovate this beautiful, beautiful house, turn it into apartments. They were planning on demolishing the Annex. We weren't sure, but we thought that's probably what we would do as well, and they were looking to build some apartments in the back. And you may have seen, they had approvals for forty-one units in the back. We had no intent of doing that type of density, but we looked for quite a while at some different plans for buildings and residences in, in the back. The plan that we have landed upon, and I'd like to present to you, is to develop, to renovate, renovate the Brownstone Mansion, turn that into apartments on the second and third floor, in total, five units, so three on the second floor, two on the third floor. And then the entire ground floor of the mansion. And we want to keep the Annex, so the entire ground floor of that, we'd like to turn into a restaurant.
Cool.
So I think the property is familiar to, to us all, but let me just sort of point out, so we're all sort of oriented. We've got Hot Meadow Street, and then. We've got Hot Meadow Street and then Drake Hill Road. So this piece right here is the mansion. This rectangle is the, is the annex. As you probably know, there is a preservation easement, so in front of the line drawn along the facade of the building, we really aren't to build anything or to create parking, and just before you have a heart attack, that's not a big box store we're thinking of putting there. Those are the various footprint of pets that the restaurant might use for events, or even having a wedding or something out front. So the...
I was thinking it was a volleyball court.
No, no.
That's not good, that's not good frontage?
No.
I mean, as I say, we looked quite a bit at various options for building apartments in the back, building residences in the back, and we simply could not make the numbers work. We didn't really want to go the type of density that the previous team was looking at. As one developer said to us, "We're not pregnant with the back. We're pregnant with the house."
Right.
So we want to try and give birth to the house first.
That's great.
Get that out. But really, the plan is very minimal invasion of the whole site. We want to keep really all of the, all of the parking. We, of course, want to keep all of the front lawn. We may add a few parking spaces here. We're not going in front of the preservation easement, but we may, by moving the curbs a little, be able to add a few parking spaces here. We'll leave the drive-through where it is. There is a bank teller drive-through there that we've had some novel ideas for what to do with it, but until we have a better plan, we'll leave it right where it is. So the plan really is for, let me go through, and I'll give you a few. This is the front, the view from the front, from Hot Meadow Street, where you see the mansion, and then you see the chapel area or the front of the annex. So the plan really is to, as I said, keep all of that. We'd like to build a porch or a deck off of the front so that you've got, and we'd add some glass across the front of that chapel, so when you're sitting there, you're looking across at First Church, and you're looking at the lawn, it's a wonderful place for dining, and then some dining out on the porch. We'd like to add this gazebo. All of this is behind the preservation easement line, so we're in the safe zone there. Picking up on some of the details, there is a stone wall there now. We would end up moving that, but some of the stone would then really become, be built into the foundation of the porch and of the gazebo. Looking at, from the south, so you're sort of with Ensign Bickford factory to your back, looking north, you'll see the, this is the front or the mansion, and then this is that big box that we just showed a picture of. What we'd like to do is really bring some windows into there, bring a porch off of there. So if you've been in the fellowship hall in the back of the, what was the, most recently the art gallery that was exclusive, it's a big cavernous hall, a wonderful place for some larger dining events. And we think with a porch off of here, you could step out of that, it has some French doors, so step out onto the porch, and you're overlooking the Ensign Bickford factory, which is really kind of a unique and genuine part of our history. So that's, that's the view. This piece right here would be new construction. It's a fairly small slice, but that would be a stairwell, an external stairwell that would get you from the commercial kitchen out to grade and then down. It would also provide egress from the lower level of the annex. Looking from the back or the east, looking west, so looking across, you would see the mansion, and then right now, there are fairly small and unattractive windows here. We really want to put some windows back in here, put some, put some larger and attractive windows with some awnings here, adding a trellis, some kind of an entrance in the courtyard there. So, you know, we gave a lot of thought to, you know, if you keep this big box of an annex, what do you, what do you do with it? And really, what I think the architect has come up with is, we're trying to just embrace that, that box, right? Put some attractive, I think, some ornamentation, put some nice windows on it, but we wanted to steer away from some sort of a mansard roof or something that really wouldn't be in keeping, and pick up some of the features, as I'll point out, from, from the mansion. And there's a wealth of details there that you could, you could draw from. This next sheet shows a few of those. You've got this, I mean, it's a beautiful building. It's really kind of quirky. It's got, it does not allow symmetry to it, and it's got some beautiful features. This is a window in the front, and this design rhythm of three, the architect is really trying to pick up, and here, looking at the east elevation, and also in the south, sort of that, that rhythm of the windows. Got a lot of roofline variation that could be built into this gazebo, and then a lot of detail, a lot of ornate entryways, features that could be built into the details on the gazebo and on the trellis. Here's a rough outline of, this is not the final plan, but of how we would use the space. So again, here is the mansion, and then the annex is this box here. So we'll bring a porch or deck off the front for dining. This wonderful room that was the chapel in First Church, and it's got a barrel ceiling, we'll keep that really all as it is. Add some windows across the front, so you have a lot more dining sitting out looking out or the church. And then the commercial kitchen would be in the, in the center here with that stairwell built outside of the building, so you go out to grade and then down to your, to the storage for the kitchen. And then this big fellowship hall in the back, this is not, probably not going to be the final plan. I think there will be some windows here and some additional dining. But as I said, perhaps a deck looking out over the, over the factory where you could step out. And dining would also be in, occupy most of the ground floor of the mansion. So we're in discussion with the restaurant group that really would like, would like to move in, would like this space. So dining in this, I mean, one of the, one of the, I think, of the goals that we had going into this, in addition to just preserving this mansion, this beautiful property, we wanted to keep it something that the public can access. The prior team, as you may know, wanted to turn the whole house into, into apartments, including the ground floor. We were just not comfortable with that for a couple of reasons. One is that's not how the property was used historically when Joseph Ensign built it. It was not a residence on the ground floor. It was a, it was a resource to the company as well. And we just didn't like the idea of buying this thing and then privatizing it so seven families could be the only ones that could ever see it. So this could be a space that you could go dine, and everybody could act, it really is a, is a, this room is just spectacular. It's got beautiful wood paneling and views out over the, and this was Joseph Ensign's office. So this would all be dining. And then in the back, the restaurant was not interested in this wing that comes back, so this would be potentially two offices with a shared, a shared conference room which the restaurant could actually use for, for events if they, if they needed. We would build apartments, as I mentioned, on the second and third floor. And going back to the site, the view of the site, relatively minimal changes to the, to the site. We start with 65. We may be able to gain a few, but in terms of occupant load for the restaurant or the offices and the apartments, that should be sufficient for the very large events. If they, if the restaurant were holding a larger event, a wedding with a tent or something, they probably would have ballet parking and use the, the parking behind Fitzgerald Plaza. So we would probably change, this is the current, current view that we like of the, the current sidewalk goes straight across, but we're thinking of reconfiguring sort of a walkway here, and creating a space here that really could be used for weddings, could be used for events where you've got a rose trellis, you maybe have some, some stone pillars or something. We need to come back in there because here, we're now in the preservation easement area, and we need to make sure that that's, but I think it's in the spirit of, this whole lawn is just a wonderful resource that we're not going to build that, but we'd love to bring some life into it. And I think having, being able to have ceremonies, be able to have town events, town parties or things on that space would be, would be a wonderful use. Dumpster would currently go in the back. Mailbox would be here. We may gain a few, gain a few parking spaces here. So that's, that's the vision, and again, I really just wanted to share it with you and see if there's issues you think we need to consider or things we should...
What's the preservation easement, what, who, whose is it?
It was given to the town, I want to say 1984, I think it was Webster Bank, or it was one of the banks. It was Charman, it was, there were several banks. And it basically says, "Draw a line across this facade," and so this whole front lawn, that we need to preserve the facade, we need to maintain the facade, and then we can't change it, and then no structures or no parking to be built in the front here.
So that was a zoning decision, or?
That was, Mr. Chairman, that was an easement placed on the, on the deed, in essence, negotiated with the town.
So that, who in the town, the selectmen or the...
With the board of selectmen.
Board of selectmen? Okay.
So again, it was an attempt to preserve that in case, in essence, you know, someone decided not to renovate the mansion, but eliminate the mansion, that there was still facade treatment as well as a grand lawn in front of that space versus a parking lot, which would change the character of that property.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mark, how would you get to the apartments? Is that going to be internal or?
There is an entrance here from Drake Hill, this entrance right here. So these, this parking would be for the apartments, maybe for the office too. The office is right, am I in the right space? The office isn't here as well. There is a, so you've got, this is a beautiful entrance, you come in, this is a beautiful panelled area here with the stairs that take you right up, so you can go into the apartments without entering the restaurant.
And the stairs already, is it an existing stair?
It is, absolutely, yeah. Beautiful wood, dark wood, wood paneling. The, there is an entrance in the back that could be the, there's a covered porch, covered stone porch that could be entrance for, for the office as well, yeah.
Would you use the front door?
We would love to. It's kind of impractical. If there's events and things, formal events, maybe we can get the, the new horse carriage to drop people off there or something. If the town, September Fest, maybe if there's an event in there, you know, that could be used, but it's, we can't see a practical way. The restaurant, the, you know, the parking is in the back, so this will be the entrance to the restaurant. This will be the entrance to the, if we toyed with the idea of reconfiguring this a bit so that you could have a drop-off here, but, you know, we love the idea, but haven't, couldn't seem to get it, get that, get that to work. We will be applying for historic tax credits on the mansion, so it will be very constrained on what type of changes we can make, which, so we'll be keeping the windows, we really won't be making any significant changes to it. But it's a, it's an incredible house, and it's in great shape, so you wouldn't really want to be... And we, we really feel that, you know, after having looked at this a lot of different ways and looked at demolishing the annex, that this is really a terrific use of that, of that space. You know, part of the thinking was, well, let's get rid of the annex. And there's a beautiful picture in the town book. Its orientation is reversed, so it took us a while to figure out what we're looking at. But there's a beautiful picture looking at the mansion from the south, and there's beautiful gardens there. So part of the thinking was, well, let's get rid of this thing and put some gardens back there. But really, when you, when you look at this, I mean, I think this rendering of the, from the front, with a porch here and that gazebo, and we'll need to work on some of the details, I think that's actually the best use of that real estate that we've seen. And I think, you know, the ability to really have some just quality dining there and have access to the mansion, we really think that, that keeping that annex and, you know, putting some of these features that we talked about, that can really actually turn out to be quite an attractive space.
It's much more attractive.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's nice. Yeah, it's a great use. You have a good idea.
We'd love to come back to you with the detailed, detailed plans. We're shooting for May 21st.
Great.
Thank you.
That's a good plan.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Okay, any more comments? Anything on our zoning rig updates?
Just what I would like to do is, as there are a few members here, if, before you leave tonight, we can look at a calendar and try and solidify a date in the next two weeks to meet. There is a fifth Monday of the month that most people wouldn't have a scheduled meeting, including myself, that could be available, April 30th.
Good.
If I can get...
Fine with me.
Bruce, Mike, and Donna, April 30th.
I have to check with my wife before I commit to that date. Mondays have been challenging lately. I apologize.
But if I can grab Donna, Bruce, and Mike before we leave and just look at a calendar real quick and pick tentatively one or two days to meet, that would, that would really help.
Nice.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn?
Second it.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.